I'd like to call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. That stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, making adjustments to the agenda. Mr. Cadwell, you have a...
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. I regrettably received a letter of resignation from Tanner Hoskins, our custodial maintenance person at the YMCA, so I'd like to add that as item 9B.
Great. Great. Yes, ready?
For the public hearing, for change of fees, after we went to publication, the Highway Department asked if we could add on another, a small fee regarding the E-permit system. It'd be $10 if they're asked to make the entry rather than the person can go online, so.
Great.
So if you consider that, yeah, I've got the additions on here.
Great. So... This is the adjusted one, if we approve it. Any other additions to the agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Great. Public comment period. Anyone for public comment today? Mr. Vanette. I'll just, before you start, I'll just read this at this time. The public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of county concern. When invited to speak, please state your name, address, and the topic you are addressing. Members of the public may speak respectfully for up to five minutes. The public comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes. So, Mr. Vanette, you're welcome to come forward and speak.
Ladies.
Thank you.
Okay. After reading last week's newspaper article about the county board discussing the idea of a committee of the whole, and the emotion about the bullying and scrutiny, I was greatly touched. To think that the county commissioners, paid by the county tax dollars, would be chastised in social media by the very people that elected them and are now paying their wages and benefits is just unbelievable. It's easy to see why the board would want to discuss the committee of the whole as an avenue to act as a secret society unencumbered by the scrutiny of their constituents. I wasn't aware of the committee of the whole concept, so I thought I should do some research prior to disclaiming the process. The committee of the whole is defined as a device in which legislative body or other deliberative assembly sit as a single committee with all the members being committee members. The procedural rules of the committee meetings are different from those of the business conducted on the floor of the assembly. Such meetings proceed as collegiate discussion with questions and answers rather than a sequence of speeches, each with a minimal interruption from the others and strictly moderated by the speaker. The committee of the whole also differs from the assembly's other committees, such as standing committees and special committees, which usually have limited membership, meet outside the main debating chamber, and have less public access and recording than business conducted on the floor. The committee stage of the important bills is conducted by the committee of the whole, whereas lesser bills may be disposed of by smaller committee. Other main motions may also be considered by the committee of the whole. Now, this source was Wikipedia. If you go by the definition, the county board is doing the same thing as the committee of the whole, except they are being filmed, recorded, and have constituents present. The board will never answer any questions directed towards them at any meetings. There would be no obvious gain in efficiency for the board, but the Cook County residents would lose even more transparency by the officials they elected. Furthermore, Wikipedia states, quote, "The standard code of procedural," excuse me, parliamentary procedure rejects both the committee of the whole and quasi-committee of the whole procedures as being outdated. The U.S. Senate ceased using the committee of the whole in 1986 during the 99th Congress. This concept was designated for committees of 50 or more participants, like the U.S. House of Representatives and the U.S. Senate. It was not designed for a five-member committee. The committee of the whole is simplified rules. In forming a committee of the whole, the meeting elects a chairperson or they appoint a chairperson. Any guests who are present then may be asked to leave the meeting. If the meeting wants to discuss matters without the presence of visitors, it can decide to formally or informally ask the chair to request guests to leave temporarily, and the meeting will proceed in camera. It appears that the board wants to continue to stop talking or listening to any participants at the monthly meetings. The crazy part of that is by this rule, only the board, not even the county administrator, would be allowed in the committee of the whole meeting. If the administrator was welcome to attend as a noncommittee member, it would be discrimination not to allow all other constituents to attend. It appears that the board wants to avoid any actual contact or social media presence by having the committee of the whole to make decisions. Ironically, the rule states that if you remove the people, it still must be on camera. I would think that between the huge tax increases and the failing to find cheaper sources of insurance, the board would be too busy to look for old federally rejected concepts, which may be beneficial to the board but not to the Cook County residents. I feel the board must take a hard look at their actions and should realize that they are being scrutinized by the people that elected them. Fact is, the voters of Cook County have the right to scrutinize the board's actions and speak out when they disagree. This is especially true when the public doesn't even trust the board. It is a real shame that the public has to use social media to scrutinize the board members because their suggestions, objections, and concerns will not be recognized by this board at any of the monthly meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're running a little ahead.
Madam Chair, we could do 9B.
Okay, let's do 9B. Excellent. Yeah, I was just trying to tick down the list here. Let's do 9B. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Yesterday, Judy received a resignation letter from Tanner Hoskins, who has been working for the last six months as our custodial maintenance person, PM, custodial maintenance person at the YMCA. He's taking another position in town at a first shift, and I can't say that I blame him, but we are certainly going to miss him because we just had a meeting on Friday to discuss how well things were going, maintaining that facility with him here. So what I, what we were able to do really quickly, because it was yesterday, is we were able to modify our ad in the paper to say we have an opening anticipating that we would accept this resignation and move to note that position being open. So at this point, I'd ask for that motion to accept this resignation and to have the ability to post the vacancy.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept Tanner's resignation?
I move that we accept Tanner Hoskins' resignation and post the position immediately. And I'd also like to note, you know, great appreciation for his work. I know it's been a great asset to try to keep that place clean. It's very busy. He's done well. Thank you. Thank Tanner.
Second. Thank you. And yes, to echo that, good employees. Sad to, very sad to see them leave, but also happy to see that they can find greater opportunity in our community. So, any opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And... Saved by the bell.
Yep.
By the door. Excellent. Very good. So Lisa and Dave, we're running about five minutes ahead of schedule, so you would come forward with your items. It would be greatly appreciated. So David Betts is joining us, highway engineer, and Lisa Storey. And there are two items for action, and then we will be hearing the 2016 annual report. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. The first item that we have for the board this morning, good morning, by the way.
Good morning. Yes, good morning.
The first item we have on the agenda is the project award for the aggregate stockpile. On April 19th, which was Wednesday, I think, last week, we opened bids for the aggregate stockpile. We received two bids, KGM Contractors, Inc., and TNT Aggregates, LLC. Their total bid amounts are shown in your packet. KGM Contractors was a low bid at $163,400. That is more than our budget, so we will have to adjust quantities on there. We've been playing phone tag, KGM and I have been, so we haven't had a chance to sit down and talk about that, but it's about $1,500, $1,500 yards we'll have to reduce out of our total bid. We'd originally bid 18,500 yards in three pits, and so we'll have to reduce that to meet budget for that. So, but we're recommending awarding the project to the low bidder, KGM Contractors of Angora, Inc., subject to complete contracts and approval by the county attorney. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Dave. Commissioner Burschain, any questions?
No, no. Looks good.
Thank you. No questions. Commissioner Storey?
No questions, thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Any opposed? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The next item on the agenda is project design services, professional design services for the CASA-17 project. As we, during the transportation sales tax process, we, if you remember, CASA-17 and County Road 45 were both identified as priority projects. With that, we issued a request for proposals for design services in March, and the proposals were due April 6th. We reviewed the proposals. We received three responses, Bolton Mink, Inc., MSA Professional Services, and TKDA, Inc., that we reviewed. We reviewed the proposals, and we ranked MSA's proposal number one due to their approach, their understanding of the project, previous relationship with Grand Portage, and the number of hours dedicated to the task. So we're recommending that the board approve MSA Professional Services proposal for the CASA-17 project at an estimated fee of $209,964.28. In addition, we're asking the board to authorize the highway engineer to sign the contract on behalf of Cook County, subject to review by the county attorney. Be happy to answer any questions. There's a copy of the proposal in your packet.
Yes. Thank you, Dave. Commissioner Storey, any questions? Comments for Dave? Given, Chair.
I don't really have any questions, just a couple of comments in looking this over. I was very pleased to see all the different sources of people that are going to be involved in this, and especially with Grand Portage, and that that be pursued with them since it is on their land there. And also the public meetings. Will the public, I mean, I know that it's a ways out, but public meetings, like with the folks who live on that road?
Well, there's really not a lot of people that live on the road, so we aren't really thinking the traditional public meetings. What we're thinking is meetings with the tribal council on that is really what we're kind of thinking is, because there's really no residents on the roadway, so, or not many. There's a couple, two, three.
But they would be included?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, good. That would be important.
Yeah, but not a tradit, I don't see, I think a traditional open house would be kind of just a waste of time.
But they would be included when you did meet with everybody up there?
Yeah.
Otherwise, they seem to have an extensive background in working up here, whether it be the Sawbill Trail rehabilitation or whatever, so seems like a good company to go with?
Yeah. Yeah, they're kind of new to Minnesota. They're a really big firm in Wisconsin, so they've got the resources, I think, to do the job. It's, they just need a chance. So, and I thought that their proposal, head and shoulders, was the best out of the three.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
I would really like to see, besides the tribal council, some sort of public conversation. I realize that there are limited people who live on the road, but again, there's a community garden at the end. There are a lot of people that use the garden and utilize the road. I know it's not easy to find those people, but they do have a list of who has garden plots up there. And I'm open to, if the tribal council feels that's not necessary, you know, have that discussion with them, but I would like for you to be open to that possibility. I think it's really important for the few people that live there and the people that are utilizing that area and trying to make their lives whole there. It's important to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Burschain?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we had a, I had to leave early when we discussed this in committee, and, or committee as a whole, excuse me, and I would like to express, you know, a concern about the perception that I think I agree with, that this is, you know, this road has sort of deteriorated over time. And I know, I'm not putting that on you or your department or anything. I think it's just one of those things that happened, and I'm not going to lay blame or anything like that, but I think, I really appreciate the opportunity now for us to extend, you know, an invitation to work with the tribal council and to make good on this. And I know we talked about, you know, surface issues and so forth. So, you know, having been sort of a part-time resident up there for a long time, and I am a strong supporter of Native American issues, my family is, and so from my standpoint as a commissioner, I would like us to really extend ourselves a little bit on this one, and not to make up for, but to reach out and say, you know, let's try to work together as much as we can. And so, and I know, you know, we've talked about that, and you're going to do that, so I want to get into the whole topic, but I think sometimes in terms of restitution, you know, if, I know where I worked before, if we felt we overlooked something, then we admit it, and then we say, okay, let's see if we can make up for it a little bit, you know, at least by some initiative. So I'm not expecting others to agree with me on that, but I'd like to express my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burschain. So, that being said, who would like to make the motion? Motion to approve? Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Very exciting to be reviewing all year's progress with the Highway Department.
All year.
A whole year. Oh, it's a big year.
All right. So really quickly, I'm going to just hit the highlights, and Lisa can go through the financials. So just kind of running through the summary and the summary of activities from the Highway Department. In 2016, Adam Nelson joined us as an engineering technician with the Highway Department. That job had been vacant for a couple of years on that. And Russ Flagstead was on medical leave, went on medical leave, and had been for the majority of the year that year. So, and as of the year end, the assistant engineer position is still vacant. In August, we passed the transportation sales tax, the half percent greater, technically it's called the Greater Minnesota Transportation Sales and Use Tax. After we had quite a bit of board discussion and public discussion, that tax began implementation on January 1st of this year on that. As far as construction goes, we led a project on the Sawbill Trail, it was an 8.44 mile project. That work began in May, was completed by, was completed by August of that year. Additionally, we were recognized for the paving by the Minnesota Asphalt Paving Association on that project. For that, that project was funded with state aid construction dollars. The CASA-12 rehabilitation phase two, those punchless items were completed of this year, and we did, we made final payment on that project. There was a half a million dollars of federal construction dollars on that, the remainder coming from state aid, state aid construction. And then the intersection lighting at the Four Corners, CASA-12, that was, the poles were installed in February of 2016. That project was funded 90% with federal highway safety improvement dollars and 10% coming from state aid construction funds. Maintenance program, really quick, road restrictions began May 9th, or March 9th, excuse me, were lifted by May 4th. The final bans were lifted on June 15th. As we went through there, we placed almost 150,000 gallons of calcium chloride at $0.94 a gallon on that. That was, that price was up about $0.04 a gallon in 2016 versus the year past. In 2016, we had KGM Contractors crush gravel. We crushed a thousand yards of class five and 18,000 yards of class one in three pits. Those were Airport Pit, Irish Creek Pit, and the Isaac Hansen Pit on the Kramer Road of that year. We completed, the maintenance personnel completed several projects. We continued doing ditching on County Road 27, the Ball Club Road. Last year, we concentrated on areas of limited site, site distance. The nice thing about that project, that ditching that we're doing is we're able to move all of that into the Airport Pit, and that gets crushed. So it's decent material. It's actually a little bit better, better material than what we're actually getting out of the Airport Pit for that. We did major graveling operations on CASA-1, CASA-16, County Road 69, County Road 70. We did ditching projects on Moose Valley Road, Mink Ranch Road, and Cascade Beach Road. Additionally, we spent a couple of months on County Road 45, repairing frost damage for that year between County Road 44 and County Road 42. Those were, we were there for quite a while, but we just pulled some numbers together on that, and that cost, just that ditching cost $291,000 on that job, on that, just that half a mile stretch of road, so, and just ditching. Additionally, we did, we did a pavement repair project on CASA-8 just west of, just west of the Ball Club Road. That was, that was going to be a small job that, as we got into it, turned into a very big job on that. So, it was about 500 feet of that road. We prepped and ready to go. We hired KGM Contractors to pave that. CASA-17, we also did patching on CASA-17. We spent about $70,000 on that, on those patches in the first mile on CASA-17 on the Mineral Center Road section on that. We had a plugged storm sewer at Fourth Avenue West and Gunflint Trail. We hired Vit Inc. to clean that, clean that line. That took them a week for, to do about 100 feet of pipe. So it was exceptionally plugged on that. That cost about $20,000. We also hired Northland Constructors to do a catch basin repair at Broadway and Third and fix the associated curb and roadway adjacent to that. And then snow plowing began on November 18th, a little later than normal. Usually, it's that first week in November we start snow plowing, so, on that. Capital purchases, it's listed in your report. We purchased two three-quarter ton pickups and one one-ton pickup last year. We just additionally, we bought a, we purchased a Towmaster trailer, and we made our final lease payment on the 2015 loader, and we began a lease payment on the 2015 grader, we made a lease payment on 2015 grader last year, so. So with that, I'll let Lisa kind of run through the financials.
Before that, could you read that last paragraph that you nicely put in there for us?
Sure. We want to thank constituents, the Board of Commissioners, and state aid and the federal government for helping us leverage all available resources in maintaining our roadways in a safe and efficient manner. We also strive to continue providing the highest level of service possible to the citizens who travel our roadways.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Hard to come by.
Yeah. Good morning. Page three is a summary page that we have to submit to MINDOT every year as we're finishing our annual report. And for you, the most interesting part is probably just the quick summation of our mileage up top with just under 174 regular CASA miles, 6.18 municipal, and then 116.41 county roads in terms of mileage. It shows our allotments in a couple of categories and our maintenance allocations, but we're going to go in detail through that, and it's a little confusing on the summary page, so we're just going to go ahead and pass on to page four, which is our financial statement, that and the subsequent page. You can see that our cash balance as of December 31st was $1,7,615.94. It would have been slightly higher than that. We had a payment issued by MINDOT that didn't cross over until January 3rd, instead of December 29th to us, and that was another $123,000 that got received in right after the end of the year. By comparison, in 2015, we were at $960,672 and change. Our current and delinquent taxes are down from previous years. They're each in the $21,000 range. In 2015, they were $23,513.15 for current receivable and $28,648.08 for the delinquent taxes. So we did make up some ground in 2016, which is good news. Our accounts receivable fluctuates a little bit from year to year. You can see the numbers, due from township is just a few hundred dollars, same from other county funds. The due from SGSDs is actually a credit balance because we've been working really hard the last few years to get money, quote, "in the bank" for them, and we'll go over those details on the billables, and you'll see why that is so important, especially, for example, with Irish Creek, because they actually had to use over 2,000 of that balance in 2016 because their snow plowing expenses ran over. So that's an important line item, and we'll go on that detail in a little bit. And then you can see due from individuals and businesses, it's $24,831 last year, or in 2015, at year end, it was $19,477. So just minor fluctuations from year to year. Same with state aid, it's at $366,862. Last year, it was at $283,467. Our allotments are where you're going to see the biggest change, and that is due to the large project on the Sawbill Trail. In 2015, we had $910,529. In terms of state aid, regular construction balance, you can see that we are slightly, quote, "in the hole." That's because we had submitted for engineering payments to cover engineering staff, and part of that allotment has to come, our payment had to come in January because we had such a large project last year. Just the timing of funds, so it's not a big deal. Our inventory is at $572,709.81. you can see that we are slightly, quote, "in the hole." That's because we had submitted for engineering payments to cover engineering staff, and part of that allotment has to come, our payment had to come in January because we had such a large project last year. Just the timing of funds, so it's not a big deal. Our inventory is at 572,709.81. Last year, it was 572,916. So minor fluctuations. Sometimes we'll see, you know, $25,000 to $75,000 worth in fluctuation depending on what we have on hand for, in particular, gravel and culverts and fuel. So our total assets this year are just over 2.3 million. If you go to page four A, you're going to see our list of liabilities and our fund balance. And it's just a summation of vendors, contracts payable, which is the outstanding balance or the retainage that we have on CASA-2 at the moment. We have that long-term lease payable on that grader that we purchased and put on the lease for four years. We have salaries and comp payable, and all that is, is what we pay for the month of December, but we actually don't issue the payments until January because of the way the payroll system works. And we have nothing for state aid overpayments. The deferred revenues, again, you see that regular construction is slightly in the hole because of the large CASA-2 project, which restored to a positive balance with the new allotments in 2017. You see our delinquent taxes, which again are down about $7,000 from last year. The good news is our fund balance has gone up a little bit. We have our reserve for inventory, of course, that $572,000 and change, which we are statutorily required to keep on the books. And then we have a small reserve for equipment replacement because we depleted that fund by $575,000 in 2015. So it is very low at the moment. And then our undesignated fund balance is $754,511.93. That is up from $731,000 and change last year. So that's great news. So our total liabilities and fund balance are, of course, at 2.3 million and change.
Lisa, what do we do, what do we use the reserve for equipment replacement account for?
The reserve for equipment replacement is something that we set up a few years ago so that when we sell equipment, those monies are designated towards equipment replacement. And we had built that balance up, and then we used that to basically help offset some of the equipment expense in 2015, and we knew that was coming, that was budgeted.
So this isn't for emergency repairs on equipment?
No, emergency repairs are under our regular shop or fleet maintenance budget, and we'll get to that. And you'll see that actually that area is down quite a bit in 2016, and I think that's because of the newer equipment. We are significantly down in parts in 2016, which is really exciting for us because that means that our, our repairs are improving.
That way we can tell the other counties, "I told you so," when they feel that you're too conservative on your replacement plan.
If you go to page five, this is just a breakdown of all of those accounts receivable, and I'm not going to bore everyone with all the detail, but I do want to talk about the SGSDs, the Subordinate Governmental Service Districts, because you can see their beginning balances were all credit balances at the beginning of the year. And then you see the current year billings are what the contractors have done for work. We just pass those right through. And then the payments are what, what they are assessed for and actually pay on their taxes, and then you can see the ending balances. And for example, on Irish Creek, I'm sure everyone went, "Hmm," when they saw that we had actually $15,000 on the books for them, but at year end, it's down $2,000 again because there's such fluctuation in terms of the winter maintenance. So our goal is to have about one year of their annual average expenses on the books so that if they have a particularly difficult winter or summer or some emergency repair, they don't end up being significantly in the hole because that did happen with one of these SGSDs, and they had to basically borrow from the county and make interest payments for a couple of years while we did an extra, a levy on them, and we're trying to help them prevent that. So that's why those credit balances are there for them, for emergencies, basically. So...
We're, I just want to jump in really quick. We're, we're sitting in pretty good shape with Irish Creek is about there on that one-year goal of reserves. And, and the remainder of them, the Mile Pine and Evergreen Road are, are kind of below that, that threshold that we'd kind of like to get them to. And so we're kind of, we're working our way when we're doing our, when we're doing our assessments at the, which is usually, usually around the first of the year, so.
And I'm sure you all remember, there was a lot of discussion about the Irish Creek levies initially. They have gone down substantially since those first couple of years when we had to help them adjust to what the expense was going to be for such a large plowing. Do you have any questions on this page? It, it's pretty straightforward.
Good question.
Are there any questions?
Because it probably is easier to answer them as they come up versus waiting. Guess we're good?
No.
Page six shows the town road allotment that we deal with annually. We are basically, again, a pass-through agency on this in that the state provides this allotment at the end of January, and we have until the middle of March to distribute that to townships that have eligible roads. Right now, only the Schroeder and Hoffdie townships do have eligible roads, and so it's not a lot of money, but they do receive something based on a formulaic distribution by population and mileage. So right now, Schroeder, because they have 4.67 miles, gets the bulk of that, $28.55. They got $1,969.43, while Hoffdie got $885.57, and they can use that for any maintenance needs or project needs that they have.
And this is, this is gas tax dollars that's allocated to town road. So just like our state aid, there's a portion of the gas tax, gas tax and, and TAB fees and things like that that, that all go into the Highway User Trust Fund, and then, and then a portion of that goes to town roads. We just have, we just have not very many town roads, and so we kind of go from there. And then the, just so that the, because I think, I think all of the board is, was not here when we did this. I could be wrong about that. Maybe Heidi was here, but we, this is by, this is by policy is the distribution method, and that was passed by the board. So it's 50% based on population and 50% based on mileage.
Page seven has the breakdown on the inventory by the type of item. And so you can see that, of course, field materials and supplies account for about half of that, whereas tires, cutting edges, and repair parts that we keep in inventory are about the other half and with a little bit of fuel on hand. Nothing really remarkable about that or outstanding. It's only changed $5,000 from last year. And then page eight and eight A.
Excuse me.
Oh, I guess, yes.
I, I just have a question because it came up at our meeting last Wednesday night, the Association of Arrowhead Counties Commissioners. And we go around robin, and so I'd like to ask this question because our commissioner from Lake County said, you know, "We give updates." In their garage, a maintenance facility fell down, and...
Literally.
Literally, yeah. And, and what he said, so this leaves to a question. It's sort of trite, but in a way, it's important. But I sort of responded, I, you know, because I've been on the Highway Committee, that we have a pretty good inventory, but the only advice they gave is said is, "Make sure you got a inventory, every spark plug and every nut and bolt." So my question is, well, what's our inventory like? And I think you had mentioned one time to our committee that you're pretty, you have spent a lot of time on it, I know.
We do, we do. So we've got, we've got a really good inventory of, of our lubes and our repair parts and not individual spark plugs and things like that because it, it gets to a point where it's too miniscule to count. But those kind of fall into miscellaneous inventory on that. We do have, we're... We are working on, based on the fire at Lake County, and Chris, Kristen Foster, the engineer, gave a presentation to the District One Engineers about a month and a half ago. And so we learned some lessons from them. We are in the middle of doing an office inventory, and that's a, that's a bigger thing for us. We're okay in the shop, but we're, we're getting that to make sure we've got the proper coverage on our insurance because that's one of the things that they tell down on. And you know what? And that's a big thing with us is we don't have fire protection in our building, so if it goes, everything goes, so, on that. So, so yeah, so we're, we're in the middle of, of that process right now, so.
You know we have fire protection?
No.
Why?
Yeah, sprinklers.
We have no sprinkler system.
Oh.
It's a new plan.
We don't have anything, we don't have anything that's flammable in our buildings. Just paper and, paper and fuels, so.
And Commissioner Burscham, also to follow up on that. Our mechanic is one of the probably most detailed people I've ever, ever met in terms of the records he keeps. And so we have much more detail in our inventory than our neighboring counties, and I know because I've talked with some of the accountants. So we really do have a, a good handle on what we have.
I'm a, I'm a little bit more of a stickler on, on making sure we've got a little bit maybe more detail than maybe what's required on that. So that's just, that's just me. It's my engineering.
And I thank you for that, and I understand there's, there's a process of diminishing returns.
Yeah.
You know, your investment of time to do that, but...
And they do...
The reality is, and I would like to introduce that, that these things can happen. And since we don't have fire protection, you know, the likelihood is greater. So at some point, we need to consider our, you know, protection of our assets.
And mechanic and his assistant do a manual count of every item in the shop at the end of every year, so they spend a full week. And we actually have our state auditors come in every year, and they spot check us on what we use because we have detailed service records where we track everything in and out, so.
Thank you.
Are those records stored somewhere besides your building?
Well, we have electronic records as we audit every month, so it gets input into the computer, but until then, no.
There's a lot of service records that are just kept on paper.
So if you talk to the city and tell them which window to go in first and what to remove, they're always very accommodating.
They can just look at the one I kick out when I leave, so.
We just know this from one hungry jack. They helped Forrest get his computer out.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's one of the issues with our, with our main campuses is it's, it's probably the biggest worry I worry about, and we got sparky lights and things like that and unstable power source in our building, and it's one of the things that we've, that needs to get dealt with, so. So yeah, so not to get on my hype horse about that. I'm trying to stay on my limo, so, on that, but... Anything else on the inventory?
Accounts payable, again, is just a breakdown of that list that we went over in the financial statement. So it shows every vendor that we had a bill that we were paying in what we call our Month 13. So we were paying in January because we received them in December. So if you go to page, page 8A, it continues. And then it shows the wages that we were paying in January for December by department along with the comp time payable that is on the books for each department for the end of 2016. Then we have that retainage for the Sawbill Trail project, and then our long-term lease payable on that grader that we are paying for over four years. Does anybody have any questions on the accounts payable?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to refresh my memory, what are the interest payments over that period of four years for that grader? What did that come to? $40,000 or something like that?
No, it's less than that, sir.
I think we're at 3%, I think, around 3% if you were to take.
It's two and a half if I remember right.
It's a two and a half.
So I would have to go back and look at the numbers. I should have brought them with me.
It just came from my mind, and it's...
Yeah, we can follow up with an email.
Give me a mail on it.
Yes.
I don't, didn't expect you to know that.
The next section, I'm not going to spend any time on unless someone really has any questions. Pages nine through 15 are a requirement for auditing purposes, and it, and they list every piece of equipment that we have in terms of anything that we track usage of, so major items. And it shows any costs associated with the year, what we call equipment rental, which means what we charge out as we're using them on our roads for MinDOT tracking purposes. And of course, our depreciation, we have straight-line depreciation. So once we're beyond the set schedule, if it's five years, eight years, 15 years on whatever piece of equipment, you'll see that depreciation is, is a zero. And then our ending balance in terms of our value as we go into 2017. Any questions on equipment that you want to talk about?
Sorry, I'm taking a lot of time. How many years do you build into your depreciation schedule?
We actually have a commissioner-approved equipment replacement schedule that I, I think you probably have, and it's by category. So if you look at page nine, for example, just to give you an idea, Commissioner, the back hose, our estimated life is 10 years. So those are depreciated for 10. Pickups happen to be five because they're a shorter life, higher intensity vehicle or piece of equipment. So it depends on what the units are categorized as.
One of the things that you can notice is, is if you go to brushers on that, on that page nine, and you look at the estimated life there under the first two tractors, you'll see that's 10. And you'll see the next one is 12. So that is... Yeah, so that one is, was, well, that was a 1993. So that was already fully depreciated before we set that schedule. So that's why it's just set at 12. We reduced that as part of the policy down to 10 years on that. So you can kind of, you can kind of see that, that there's a, the same thing with the graders. You'll see that that's first grader is a 12-year, but we went down to a nine-year depreciation for the newer graders.
Thank you. My eyes are not that good and quick.
Honestly, if Lisa just said it, I didn't even know this was a vanilla standard, so.
Any other questions on our equipment? Then if we go to page 16 through 16B, that is our state of revenues and expenditures. This is a document, again, that is required for auditing purposes. So you can see in the left-hand column on that first page, these are our cash receipts. The column on the right, called our Modified Accrual Balance, is basically what we use because we're on Modified Accrual Accounting, so that incorporates our Month 13, which is, again, those expenses that we try and capture from January that, you know, we pay in January, but are from actually December. So we did well in terms of our cash receipts, bringing down some of our delinquent taxes. We had 1.8 million, just over, in terms of taxes. You'll see our intergovernmental revenue is 4.4 million on the Modified Accrual Balance, whereas, you know, our taxes are 1.8 million. So you can see where the bulk of our revenue does come from annually. It is from our intergovernmental revenue, including our payment and lieu and taxes or SRS money, which was $197,000 and change in 2016, but is decreasing significantly in 2017. We had budgeted about $160,000, thinking that that would be renewed, and the actual receipt is more in the $70,000 range. So we took a hit on our 2017 budget already, just so you're aware.
Can you not say that with a smile?
Trying to be upbeat because we'll make it up. It's what we do.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. So in terms of fees for services and materials on the Modified Accrual, you'll see it's $243,670.68. The bulk of that is, of course, our fuel station. There are some other services and charges for maintenance and things that we do. Yes, Commissioner DuKirk?
You were here during the last federal shutdown. How does that, does that affect you when it comes in with the intergovernmental revenues? Since they're discussing it again?
Federal does not affect us a lot, and we don't have any federal aid coming through. Usually if there's a federal aid, MinDOT, a lot of times, MinDOT will cover that with the understanding that it's going to come. And state affects us more. But if you, if you remember in '11, we did, we had the state shut down. And that was, that was actually a boon to us because we were in the middle of Highway 8 when that shut down. So all MinDOT projects stopped, but we had the cash, and that's, that's why it's important to have the cash. We had the cash to float it. And so we got, KGM was doing that job, and they, because they lost all this work, they, they moved all their crews up to, or a lot of their crews up to 8, and we got that done faster than I've ever seen a road done. So, so that was actually good, but depending upon how long it is, we sometimes have to float the cash, so, on that, so.
Well, the state said they're on schedule, so.
We're hoping.
Okay, to continue, we have, of course, sales of materials, county maps, just miscellaneous things which aren't, of course, large ticket items, but they are part of our business. You'll see we have a small refund/reimbursement from MCIT after they completed our comp audit and those kinds of things that typically happens. And then the pass-through of the town road allotment, which we consider basically a non-expenditure because it's simply a pass-through. If you go to page 16A, you will see a list of our expenses by department. So if you look at the Modified Accrual Balances, which is what we go by over on our side, our administration was just over $324,000. And that, the bulk of that, of course, is the personnel. Engineering and construction, of course, is our large-ticket item for the year, and that is because of $2.5 million in project payments. The bulk of that was Sawbill Trail. There are final payments on a couple of other smaller projects that Engineer Betz discussed during the highlight of activities for the year. You'll see other services and supplies is over a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. That is primarily engineering consultant work that will eventually be rolled in and reimbursed through state aid. So it can't go in as a project payment, of course, but we do seek that as part of the overall project expenditure when we are up to construction. In terms of highway maintenance, you will see that we have, of course, our long-term lease payables, our capital outlay, and then other services and supplies of eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six thirty-six. That, of course, includes culverts, salt, sand, gravel, calcium chloride, all of those particular contracts that we come in and seek a board approval for during the year to, to contract for those supplies. And then, of course, our million dollars in terms of the personnel and benefits to keep that department running and keep our roads graded and plowed and mowed. In terms of equipment and shop, you will see that we have our personnel services of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, other services and supplies of five twenty-three, eight thirty-five. If I flip back to the budget summary, I just have to tell you this because I mentioned it and I'm so excited. We had two hundred and two thousand budgeted for parts and supplies because we have been in most years anywhere from, one hundred and fifty-six was the low in 2014, but in 2013, we were at two hundred and six nine ninety-four. In 2015, we're at a hundred and ninety-five four ninety-one. We are at a hundred and thirty thousand, three twenty-eight fifty-seven in parts in 2016, which is, I think, probably the lowest in fifteen years. And that we can attribute to the newer equipment and none of those big ticket repairs, although we had one right at your end. I shouldn't say none, we had one, but we had, in most years, had several that really drove that up. And we ended up going over a budget many years in that category, so.
And that also goes to, that also goes to the warranties we're purchasing. So that, you know, on the, you know, on the grader was eighteen thousand. You know, on a truck, it's about eight or nine thousand. So that, you know, some of the stuff that we've had on these, you know, that we have had on the trucks and whatnot, they're covered by, by warranty and that gets, that gets picked up there, so.
Just, do we, do we do a sort of a cost analysis? Like is the purchase of the warranty, does it far exceed the, the cost, the actual cost?
We do. We haven't done one in a few years on it, but yeah, we do. We kind of look at that and see, you know, does this make a lot of sense and what are we paying? It's hard to tell, especially when we're, you know, like in a truck, when we're replacing trucks every ten years or so. It's hard to tell because they're new models and there's no real, we don't have any history with those trucks anymore, or with the new models. And, and that the difference between the trucks we replaced and the trucks we have now is night and day. I mean, some of those trucks that we replaced were twenty-five years old, but even some of them were, were twelve or thirteen years old. And so, but the new emissions and things like that, that's a, that's probably a biggest problem we're having with the trucks. But everybody's having them with trucks because it's all new technology and they're all playing with what to do and how to do it. And they're making improvements as we go. And we're making improvements on how we order too, on stuff. We've, an example is, is we have a coolant tube that, that is constantly going out on us. It's rusting. And that has to do with the new emissions and the new coolants that they're using and, and the nature of our environment. And so we've, we've started ordering that stuff now with stainless. And so we're avoiding that, that repair. So those are kind of those things that we do, so, but yeah.
Hard to find apples in that scenario.
Yeah.
And also to that question, Madam Chair, we do an equipment cost analysis by unit every year and we track it since its purchase so that we can see which years' costs spike in, in terms of setting that capital equipment replacement schedule. So we have spreadsheets on every unit if anybody would like to see those.
Thank you.
And then to continue, we have our other operations, which, you know, is where we lump some of our miscellaneous work and our work comp and insurance audit and some of those things. And then our town road allotment, that non-expender, that's just a pass-through. And basically, all of that detail goes to page sixteen B, which is our summary, where we reconcile last year's cash of nine hundred and sixty thousand, six seventy-two seventy-six, add our receipts of six point two million and change, less our disbursements of six point two million and change for our ending cash balance of one million, seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And then to the right of that, we start with last year's fund balance of seven hundred and fifty-seven on the modified accrual, add the revenues, take out the expenditures, and our fund balance is seven hundred and eighty thousand, two sixty-two sixty-eight, which is again, up from seven hundred and fifty thousand, sub, excuse me, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand and change last year. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. And you're going to continue on, right?
Yes.
This is not the opportunity to ask the big questions.
Page seventeen is the, is the one that Engineer Betts is always looking for. It's the summary of road program maintenance costs, which shows by program. And I have to apologize, I forgot to put extra little headers on this year. So if you have a pen or a pencil, above program ten through nineteen, if you would write regular CASA.
C S A H.
C S A H. Above program twenty through twenty-nine, MUNI. For our municipal CASA. And then thirty through thirty-nine is county roads. Someone had mentioned that, so I'd started doing that and it was my oversight not to do it again this year because I'm so used to the numbers. So I do apologize. So if you look at this summary, you will see that on our regular CASA, we spent just under one point seven million in terms of our maintenance, which is nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents a mile. In 2015, we were just over ten thousand at ten thousand, ninety-one dollars. And you'll see that the numbers will fluctuate from year to year, depending on any particular projects or big ticket items that we have. In terms of MUNI CASA, we spent a lot of money there this year because of the special projects that we had. And Engineer Betts mentioned those, that cleanout on Fourth Avenue and Gomflint, the Broadway catch basin, and so on and so forth. And so we actually spent sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents a municipal mile this year, which is big. Yes, sir?
Oh, sorry.
He's, he's having trouble following more. That is up significantly. It's actually double of what we spent per mile last year because of the special projects this year. And then in terms of the county roads, it's almost the same as 2015. We're at twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-nine cents a mile. Last, excuse me, I say last year, 2015, it was twelve thousand, six ninety-one ninety-six a mile. So not much change. We are still spending a lot of time and money on our county roads. We can go through the, the detail that's on the following page. If you have questions about the different categories, you'll see that routine maintenance.
Let's jump real quick. One of the things, if we can go back to seventeen. You'll see the difference between county road and CASA in the cost per mile. And one of the things I want to point out is about, we have about a hundred and, in 2016, it's, kind of depends upon which way you look at it. Right now, we have about a hundred and twenty-two miles of pavement. Almost all of that is on CASA routes. At the beginning of last year, at the beginning of last year, we had a hundred and, a hundred and eight thousand, or a hundred and eight miles of CASA pavement total. So we added eight point four four and there's a couple of miles of, of like Toffey Park Road and Manitou Road are paved, but for the most part. So you can kind of see that maintenance cost difference. It's a little hard to take, to tell exactly the maintenance cost between a paved road and a, and a gravel road. Because there's still, there's still seventy miles of unpaved CASA routes in Cook County. So there's, but you can see that, that's kind of the difference and it's pretty consistent on that. And you'll see that, you'll see that normally on our CASA MUNI. How much were we last year?
We were seven thousand, seven sixty-seven on a, on a mile.
So seventy-seven hundred on CASA MUNI municipal. And those are a hundred percent paved. So that'll give you, that kind of gives you an idea of what our maintenance costs are on paved versus unpaved. So gravel roads are cheaper, but gravel, gravel roads cost considerably more to maintain on that, so.
Thank you for that explanation. Spilling a lot of licks.
So on page seventeen A, you will see that we have overarching categories from the previous page, the routine maintenance, the repairs and replacements, and the betterments, and then survey as a separate one. Do you have any questions about the expenditures in those various categories? If not, we won't even ask. The next section comprises construction cost summaries by three major categories. They are our CASA routes, our county state aid highways, our county roads where we are ramping up for our half percent sales tax, and then bridges because they are a category that we try and track separately. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on all of these pages because there are summary pages in each category and then a detail for each project, which shows current and prior year costs. Page eighteen shows, of course, the large out, outflow of cash on the Sawbill Trail and then finishing work on some minor projects, as well as those that we are just ramping up for future construction. Page nineteen, I do want to touch on briefly. You will see that we don't have project numbers assigned to seventeen, sixty, or ninety-nine, which is everything that we might work on. We do have county road forty-five set up as a project. We did not have a lot of project engineering on it in 2016, only about thirty-four hundred and change. We started looking at seventeen, there's ninety-eight forty-five, and that's that CP, all the zeros, and then seventeen, until we actually make it a project this year. I'm just designating by, by their road number at this point. We've also done some initial design looks at county road sixty for thirty-five hundred and twenty dollars. And then just general county road possible projects, we've done almost ninety-two, or just over ninety-two hundred dollars worth of engineering work on. So the pages after that will show the detail on those. If you go to page twenty, you will see that we've worked on four bridge projects that Engineer Betts has been discussing with you. They are in order Junko, Cross River, Ski Hill, and Seagull Bridge. So we've done about fifty-six thousand dollars worth of engineering work on those. Engineer Betts, would you like to touch on which ones we've done bridge bond on yet?
So yeah, so we've got, and just so that you know, Ski Hill is not the, the old Ski Hill Road. It's out at Papa Charlie's, the bridge by Papa Charlie's there. But, so the first one, the five ninety-eight thirteen job, that's the Junko River job. That is, that, that project is done. It's done as far as design goes. We have, we've got approval from the state. We've applied for, we've applied for bridge bonding for that. We're hoping to do that in 2018, if we can get the bonding, if the legislature comes through with bridge bonding. Because that one kind of fits really well in 2018, we're doing South Shore Drive or CASA eighteen. So they're kind of right next to each other. It's easier to cover when they're right there. So Cross River, the Cross River job, which is the five ninety-eight oh nineteen job, the, that project is almost designed, or it's, it's sitting on my desk for review from the consultant. But, but they're through, they're through state aid, they're through state aid on that. And I think stated, I think bridge, the bridge office, but I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're through bridge office yet on that. So that's, that'll be, once we get that, we'll apply for bonding. Tentatively, we're kind of thinking in twenty twenty because we've got, our program road for, or state aid project on that road is between county road, the county road ninety-twos. So from the end of mid-trail to where we finished up. So that allows us to kind of do that all at the same time. And again, cover, cover that. That's, the Cross River Bridge is about fifty, fifty, Heidi probably knows exactly how far it is. Fifty, about fifty miles from the office. So I'd rather not be doing a job in Lutzen than doing a job in, doing a job up on the Cross River at the same time. So the next one is Ski Hill, the Ski Hill, or the Ski Hill Road one, six oh five, oh zero zero five. That project is about, about ninety percent in design on that. We've been working with the Ski Hill on that. They're, they're going to have some cost share on that, on that project. And we're working to get on there. And then we're kind of hoping to maybe do that in 2019. It's kind of our, our goal on that. That is by far our lowest rated bridge on that. Although I worry more about, I worry more about Cross River than I do, than I do that one, even though I, I do worry about that one too. So on that. And then finally, Seagull River Crossing, that's a, that'll be a box or a double box. We're, we're not quite sure on that. That's just probably like at twenty percent on plans for right now. I would like to do that one in twenty, if I could also. Is do that when we're, when we're up doing the Cross River and doing the, doing between the ninety-twos on, on compliance. And that's kind of where we're at.
Commissioner DuKirk. So is Junko set for twenty eighteen to coincide with the South Shore formalization?
That's what I'd like to do, yes.
Okay. From my house, it's fifty-three miles. So from your site, it's fifty-five miles.
Yeah.
Not to Junko to Cross River.
Are there any other questions regarding that area? If not, we'll continue. Just a couple of pages left. You will see that we have the 2017 final budget, along with the 2016 total expenditures listed. Just going to point out that we did add forty-six nine forty-three eighteen to our, to our balance at the end of the year, which means we were under on our expenditures. Again, if we had been able to receive that a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven dollars and sixty-eight cents in, that would show on that as an addition as well. It just didn't cross from the state in time. So do you want to talk about anything about that, Commissioner?
No, other than, wisher?
I mean, Engineer Betts, my goodness.
I don't know about that. No, other than, that's actually one of those, one of those items that, that one of the, you know, that, that positive balance of, of our budget, that one of those places that we'll, you, that we'll probably look to to try to balance that reduction in the safer, or secure schools funding this year, so. Oh, yeah. And at least you just wrote me a note too. And then we'll, you know, we're still six months without an engineer, so which is budgeted for. So wages and benefits will help offset that, that SRS on that. And then some, some, a few months of, without Rust too, so for the year, so. I think, I think we'll be okay. But we're going to have to kind of get an idea of where we're at. Probably like, what, at the end of quarter two and then we'll make some adjustments based on that if we still need to.
And then the last page is just to make you smile, hopefully, after sitting through all of those numbers. Sometimes I'm not sure which way to go.
Love it. I have two arrows for one either way. That's good.
Mr. Sterling, that's a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Dave, let's back up to Sawbill Trail.
Yeah.
The company that did that, do they have any kind of guarantees to come back and fix a couple of those little bumps that are happening now? What do you think?
No, on that, yeah, the problems we're having, we're having a few problems in, in some limited areas on, on Sawbill. The big bump we've got right by the six hundred road, I couldn't possibly tell you what's going on there. We dug that out five feet, brought in good material, put in fabric, put in GeoGrid. Everything's by the book on that. And how we have a frost heave in that road, I don't have any idea. The good news is, it's better than it used to be, which still is driving me absolutely crazy. We've got farther up, we've got some movement in the subgrade that we're not quite sure what's going on. And we've got some, we've got some premature cracking in the road. I think what's going on is, is we, if you, just to go back on the history on Sawbill, that was built for pavement originally. So if you think about it, there's two feet of gravel underneath there. In some cases, there's granular material underneath there, beneath the gravel. And so when you go through there, but when they build those side slopes, they kind of put the native material back, which is kind of clay in the area. So I think what happened was, is because we didn't pave that road, I think what's going on is, is we've got essentially a little swimming pool underneath there that was in the gravel. So it's, it's highly saturated with there. And I think we have frost, frost movement in, on those roads. And that was one of those things, we were hoping that would, it'd be dry enough underneath there to kind of get that to settle in and, and go from there. So, so when the water freezes, it expands. So, so when the water freezes, it expands and kind of moves the road around a little bit. We're going to play around with some, I'm going to play around with some, some techniques on that without having to try to remove the pavement. One of the things we're doing is, is next meeting, you'll get a crack sealing quote, and we're going to crack seal those, those areas of cracking. And, and hopefully it'll dry out over the years now that it's sealed. I think it was, honestly, this is kind of one of those lessons that I'll, that I'll tell the board is, is if you build a road to pave it, pave it. Because it's, it's kind of one of those things. And so we ran into a little bit of, we ran into some saturated gravel when we did some of our subcuts. We did a lot of subcutting on that road, mostly south of the six hundred road. We did a little bit north of the six hundred road, but we did most of it to the south because that's where we were seeing all the, all the frost movement in the roadways. And so we're, we're looking at, I don't know for sure what the solution is going to be. One of the things I'm going to try to do is I'm going to try to dig along the edge of the pavement and see if I can connect that gravel that's underneath there. And try to lay a drain tile in there, and maybe it'll run out the side, and I can get into a drain tile and run it out. Drain tile's pretty, pretty cheap. And we'll try to do that with, with forces on that. But there's, but the contractor didn't really do anything wrong there. It's, it's a situation of some unanticipated, unanticipated issues with the subgrade that we didn't know. It didn't show up in the borings, the water, if we would have seen water down in those borings, we would have gone after it and dug those out and, and things like that. So we, we just, to say the least, I'm frustrated on that, so.
Yes, I've had some reports of drivers saying, what the, what is going on?
That bump, that's the one that's, I, I can't figure out. I don't know why it's doing it. I was there when they were digging it out, several days I was out there checking it out. And we even went deeper than we originally planned in spots in there. And it's just, I think we've got maybe a spring underneath there that we don't know about. One of the things I'm, this is kind of a, is an idea of one of our technicians, and it's not going to cost a lot of money, so I'm kind of worried. I'm kind of thinking I might try it. But taking a sand point, you know, for a well, and try to drive it in the side of the, side of the bank. And see if I can kind of basically pop a hole in it and get it to drain out. We're going to try that, see, see if we can do it. Basically, kind of lance the boil and see if we can get it to work. But honestly, I don't know why, I don't know why that's going on there.
Well, thank you for your effort. And for Lisa, for this report, it's, it's amazing what you do to present all this to us. And make it so that we can basically follow along with you and come up with, you know, a great monetary plan for the highway department. So I really appreciate it.
Is that bump on Sawbill anywhere near where a speed limit change is? Because the bump on the Confluent Trail is right before the forty, so it's a really good reminder.
I have not been up this winter, how's that, how's the two patches we did holding up?
The patch up by Swampers is totally fine.
Okay, but the, the two that we did last year, not the, not the, but we filled in those, those dips up there, did they come back?
No, they should be fine. And actually, the little gravel patch right above Henstrom's that reminds you to slow down, it's been down the last couple of days.
Okay.
It's been kind of nice there.
Yeah, we've, the, yeah, are you talking about the one before eight or the one up by Henstrom's?
The one up above Henstrom's before George Washington.
Yeah, that one is, that's another.
I went up in the morning, it was covered in snow, so I thought you had for some reason gone out and paved it because it was so nice. And then when I came down later, I'm like, oh, it was very pleasant.
Yeah, that's another one of those, I wasn't around when we, when they did that job. But that's one of those that I don't understand. And that's again, one of those unanticipated things, they did the culvert where that bump is, they did a culvert there. And for some reason, that's wanting to, that's wanting to heave on, I think what it is, is I think what the culvert stain where it's supposed to be. And the, the side slopes are, are heaving. Eight's doing the same thing between six and twelve. Eight's doing the same thing as where we did the pipe repairs in twenty twelve. Those are holding steady, but now we, we've just pushed everything out to the other spots. So it's very roller coaster, to say the least, so.
I'm thinking half is understaffed.
Could be, could be.
The guy we never found yet.
Okay, anything else?
Motion to accept.
Well, I would like to come in.
Do you want to second it and then you can comment?
Sure, I'll second it. I, I served on Highway Committee and now on the Safety and Transportation Committee. And as I've spent hours and hours and hours and hours, I want to express my appreciation to, to you for the work you do.
Thank you.
And I've, I've worked in complex issues and, you know, it's, it's extreme. There's a lot of complexities to it. There's a lot of variables that we can't control where we live. And I know that my son-in-law's a geology professor, and he specializes in, in his area, in a large area. And you know, there's just a whole lot of stuff moving around, and I think you alluded to that. So, you know, sometimes it's just, we just have to do the best we can. But I've gone more and more to appreciate as I gain more information. And I'd like to say it's, you know, it, it's extremely complex. And sometimes people, when they're dealing with complex things, like to take shots at it. And, you know, that's understandable. But I'd like to just say from my experience on this, and you guys do a darn good job, and thank you, you know, for what you got, and you're understaffed and so forth. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments before we vote? And the vote is to accept the plan, the report, yeah? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Thank you very much. And now we will break until ten o'clock, at which time we have public hearing regarding the change to the schedule.
Down to the very last pencil.
I'm instead of pitching, you know, I get concerned when you don't have a sprint rush system. We'll be trying to have a spark.
We get a new building, that'd be all kinds of sprinters.
I think we need to talk about it.
So I'm going to wait to hear from you on that. I, I don't want to push, if there's an opportunity for us to push, it's appropriate place for us to say. Talk to somebody, talk about the importance of us. Unless, that's appropriate. I'll risk relationships at the race.
Another flash press release, it's working now.
Rita, did they get it figured out?
I think so.
What was it? Something was, you know, he has to post it. For whatever reason. Corner of the credit card. Oh, I don't know what's going on with that. She said, she called everybody that needs to answer that question. Went back two months, and I mean, everything had paid and paid. Again, I hate this credit card.
Well, and Rowan's got the card, and he said, I think we'll take it. So, so another question for you, when we get stuff from Jeans, is that an account?
Jeans?
Jeans that, that was starting for today. Is that, is that an account, I just told them to put an account, or do I take one of the credit cards with me?
I honestly don't, since I've been doing it, I haven't, Johnson's we get Babe Willis. I haven't seen anything come through for IGA.
I'll just, I'll just take one.
I mean, you can try it, you can ask them to.
Yeah, I'll try that first, and then if not, I'll shove the card.
Yeah.
Better take my word badge with me then.
Morning, Jean.
Morning, Rita.
I see you're wearing those great colors.
Yeah, well, the Northern Lights have been out, you know, they stopped me.
I was seeing more of the colors, county brown.
Oh, that's it. Good point.
I am, I'm wearing, I'm wearing the county brown.
Yes, this will be the way I do it.
Artistic way.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm not a big person for wearing brands, but.
So we're having around to it. We told you with the lives here this morning, that's why. So I think it's working now.
That's, okay.
It was something, and it has to be posted on YouTube, and then we take that, and that's how we do it. And it, Patrick, I posted it, and it just wasn't shown up. So, yeah, I think it fixed it. But it's kind of a bad time for that to happen.
I know, when they're being so sweet.
So I got on, probably should have, we got on, said we were having technical problems.
Good.
You should have sent that to me.
Did you get my email, Rita? So, yeah, did you get my email?
So now I guess I'll tell them.
I'm sorry, we're just, we're just, no worries. I just have this, but Brady mentioned something about.
We might have a clean copy.
I signed this one.
I don't have clean copies right now, but I can get one. Do you need a clean copy?
I don't need one.
Probably, yes.
You tell me.
I'll have, I'm ready to, when. He might have done it first, but I'll have him, he's got some. That's ours, yeah, so y'all get some of that too for Rita. When I come into the office, I'll have one ready for you.
Okay, I'll be around all day. So I'll stop, I'll show me.
Just to see. And I love your scarf.
Oh, thanks. Rita pointed out that it's the county brand. And I pointed out that the Northern Lights inspired, you know, I would have inspired the county brand.
There you go.
Yeah, all works. Yeah, okay. Just open your conversation.
Oh, yeah, I can cook them. It's good earlier.
So is your first team still, like, what, is it still?
Since I went on vacation, the Tennessee's dropped. The weather's gotten better, that's also what. It's very rare that there wouldn't be a light. You just walked in and had to turn around.
Okay, so you don't have to say it. You should.
They don't, I don't, they have a sign up sheet, they put it out. And then, like, it wasn't. And people, I think, didn't know where.
I think it took like three years for them.
Any thoughts? I'd like to get that.
You know, we're slow. But we are, so I'm volunteer for the Healthy Living Committee, and so we're looking at.
Yeah, was it a name? Yeah, that's also. Yeah.
That's the way to leverage these funds.
So revamping.
Yeah, revamping the group exercise. So what's taking you so long? People, what are the best times to class this?
But. Oh, well, that's fair, but otherwise. Awesome. Ooh, this must be hiding. No, it's Lyra. Lyra? Whoa, he must be thinking of you.
One comment that I got was from.
When we were at Grand Portage, I ate vegetables. No, but we don't go explore the area. Particularly as a beginner. Yeah.
Something else on the strawberry.
Kerry Bird, when Kerry Bird was here, she went to that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we missed that, so.
Yeah.
And all fired up.
At least in the big cities.
Awesome! Okay, that is really awesome.
And he's wanted to relieve her, it's true.
Oh, fantastic! Awesome!
We had the credit card when we were at Grand. For some reason, they wouldn't. And I told you to put it on yours.
So it's just not Saturday, the third problem.
How do you prevent that from happening?
Awesome. And they put it on mine too, you know, they turned it over.
So he created a logo for it and everything, a she-rise.
And when I was there that morning, I heard it. And I said, are you sure? Yeah, yeah.
Well, I asked him, he still has a company credit card.
And I'm always interested.
So I didn't.
Brand New is, Brand New is the only one I can kind of get into that I've had issues.
Well, I guess maybe the only way to do it is to send your state card. And he would say that if the reservation was made.
It would have still been on yours.
So the whole nine yards would be.
Yeah, as possible. Yeah. Like even the change. And I think Kerry. Some people, I think. So Ginny's went through correctly, Josh went through mine one room. But there was an issue with Grand View, it's not anywhere else.
Yeah, but I mean, why, why wasn't mine?
Very good.
The rest of yours.
And then if we had a regular. And mine was a personal and the car. And I had called them. And when we checked out, I asked. And Ginny, I had to go get Ginny's. Great.
I guess. She would love to, she just got on the bike.
On bike?
And she got Kerry's on the road bike too, so if you got to take down the road. And she got Kerry's old road bike too, so if you got to take down the road.
I think it's fixed now.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock, we can begin our public hearing. Um, so this public hearing is being conducted pursuant to applicable Minnesota statutes and the standing rules of the county board. A formal record will be made of this proceeding. Accordingly, we request that all speakers sign in and state your name and address at the beginning of your testimony. Both verbal and documentary evidence will be accepted by the board in order that everyone who wants to speak has an opportunity to do so. Um, the time limit will be five minutes on testimony. So.
Madam Chair, I could start, this is under Minnesota statute 37341. Uh, there's, there's two sets, three sets of fees here, just data process, radio communications, road and bridge. And I could just start by, by reading what is and what's proposed and then if there are any questions, the department heads are here to answer those. So, the first one is data processing, MIS. It's, uh, to change a current fee for a printer setup, it's a wide format printer, from $40 per hour to $50 per hour after the first 15 minutes, just to reflect cost changes. And then under radio communications, uh, two new fees, one called, uh, non-standard radio service, $50 an hour. The second, radio communication training, $50 an hour. And Rena is here, if there are any questions on any of those fees. Okay, the, the next set are all road and bridge. There's a current fee on our schedule for driveway and utility permits on county roads, it's $50, period. And the proposal is to split that out, to have, uh, a driveway entrance permit alone for $50 with a $250 deposit to be refunded if the entrance is completed with highway department approval within one year of application. And then the other new fee is the split out of the utility permit, currently it's $50. The proposal is just to change, to increase that to $100. And the other new fees are a moving permit, uh, base fee of $50 and then additional fees for overweight loads, as you can see there, from 80,000 to 99,999 gross weight, $30 per trip. From 100 to 149,999, 75 per trip. From 150 to 199,999 gross weight. $150 per trip from 200 to 249. 250 per trip from 250,000 to 299. 400,000 per trip and then 300,000 and up, $600 per trip. Then there was the additional that we added on at the beginning of the meeting was for, uh, requesting these permits, people can go online and do it themselves, but if they request the highway department to do it for them, uh, the proposed fee is $10.
Thank you.
Dave is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard? All right. I think that's the end of our public hearing, apparently, or.
Well, you can include your, your discussion and questions for.
Okay, so we don't have to close the public hearing.
You close it before you take any action.
Okay, thank you. So, discussion, Commissioner Storley, do you have any comments or questions to?
Well, under the category of radio communication, being new, um, radio communication training, that would obviously exclude public, public safety, but what would that include under training?
It, it would include, um, organizations like the Forest Service, um, who we don't support, um, provide support for and are under our current service, but that might want training on those radios. In fact, we have a request from the US Forest Service now to train, uh, several of their staff, but it's not somebody that's included in our group of people that we support. So, it, it gives us a way to, um, to charge them for that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner DuKer.
No questions.
Commissioner Bershon.
No questions, I would like to move that we adopt these new fees.
I think we'll have to wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, this is just comment time and then we'll close the public hearing and we can make a motion at that time? Is that proper? Okay. So, do you have any comment or question to ask and then we'll close? Any other comments or questions? Did, did you want to speak?
I, I got a question.
It's that. You can reopen for public comment, but he needs to, you know, be part of the public comment, you can't just ask a question.
Okay, so, um, in order to ask your question, um, Jan, we invite you to just come up and, um, be part of the public hearing. We're still in public hearing.
Sorry, I thought about this too long, but it's a simple question. When you get into these overweight loads, which are very injurious to most highweights, is there, on the permits, um, an actual amount of axles, weight-bearing axles, that are minimum for these loads?
Yeah, there are, um, we look at axle weight loads when we're, when we're doing that, so it's axle groups, sometimes it's axle groups.
So, that is in the permit that they know that.
Yeah, when they fill out their permit, yeah, when they put, when they put their permit, but for ease of, for ease of fees, fee schedule for the board's information, for ease of fee schedule, um, we're just total gross vehicle weight on that, but we do, when we review the permits, we review them based on axle loadings and the ability of the road to handle those and sometimes we don't, sometimes we don't approve.
Okay.
Additionally, if I may just reinforce that statement by saying that we also require the min dot permit so that we're not just taking the carriers word for it. There is verification of what those axle configurations are.
That was my second question, so, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, did you? Are we ready? Okay.
A, a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Second?
Second, support.
I'll listen.
To go that way and that way. Okay, so who?
Jan?
Ginny.
Ginny.
And then Lyra.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we can move into, um, discussion and make a motion. Any discussion, um, would I, would entertain a motion?
I, I'm so moved that we adopt this fee schedule effective 4/25/17.
Second?
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone. So, Bill Lane, you are up and almost exactly right at the scheduled time. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, hopefully you've all had a chance to read the packet for the agenda item that I have today, which is unusual in the sense that, uh, conditional use permit in the general commercial zone district typically applies to a single-family residence being, uh, established in connection with a business. Uh, in the case of Rick Anderson, who's been a, a longtime property owner in Schroder and is now a town supervisor, um, he is asking for, uh, removal or excision of the residence from the, the business operation while retaining the general commercial zone district. So, it's, it's essentially a mere reversal of what happens going forward. We're just separating out the residence. Uh, Rick's, uh, justification for doing so is based on the fact that he has been a, a somewhat driving force in the establishment of the general commercial zone districts in Schroder to, in Schroder Township and he felt that losing that zone district opportunity would have a negative effect on the township. So, there was a fairly succinct discussion at the planning commission, um, you know, even though it isn't an identified conditional use, we still have the clause that, uh, section 10.03D, which says that anything not identified as a conditional use still has the ability to be treated as a conditional use. So, we brought that up as a conditional use to remove the residence from the general commercial zone district. Uh, subsequent to approval, Rick is going to separate out and do an administrative subdivision to separate that general commercial parcel and separate it out from his business operation, which is Temperance Traders and he has five cabins and that sort of thing. So, it isn't going to change the landscape of Schroder Township along the Highway 61 corridor. It seemed like a reasonable use to us in our preliminary discussions and the planning commission echoed that. They approved it unanimously with the recommendation that you as well, uh, approve the request.
Thank you. Commissioner Storley, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, well, Rick and I had a little discussion about this and he was pleased that step one has already been, um, in his favor. Um, I do have a couple of questions or one question. Um, the hearing was, um, March 3rd, when the application was submitted?
The hearing was April 12th.
Okay, and then it was application.
Application was submitted.
So, since then, you've received no letters from anyone? You sent out about 20 letters to the adjacent property owners, you've heard? Nothing negative?
Correct. The only additional comments we received was from Schroder Township supporting the request and no one had any negative comments about this. It's kind of, uh, you know, the frontier spirit is alive in Schroder Township, I guess.
Amen. Um, and he has plenty of land, so that part is good that he can separate that out, so, thank you.
Commissioner DuKer? No questions. Commissioner Bershon?
No questions, looks like it's been very thorough and followed the process, thank you.
Motion to approve? Thank you.
Support.
Okay, I just have one, um, question and this is probably another, um, question of ignorance, but, um, this is a conditional use permit to separate a residence from a commercial zone. So, is this like, it's not a, it, it's still considered a permanent zone change?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's.
Well, it is a zone change, it's just the excision of a component of the zone district permitted or conditional uses. So, the zone district will remain general commercial.
That, that's, that answers my question. So, it's not a permanent zone change, it's just the use will change for however long the conditional use permit lives. Which is, which is the life of the conditional use.
Right.
It's not a permanent change, it's.
And, and Rick's hope is that someone will, once he does subdivide, that someone will come in with an entrepreneur spirit and start a business and, and be able to utilize. The irony at that point is that he's, if, if a business is created on that separated general commercial parcel, the new property owner, if he establishes a business, is going to have to come back for a conditional use permit to establish a single-family dwelling in the zone district. We're kind of doing the shell game here in a, in a sense, but completely understandable from the perspective of township desires and goals and that sort of thing.
So, all options still exist for the new owner.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion?
We just did that.
Yeah. Okay, so any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Amanda, you're up. Amanda and Lisa?
Morning, Madam Chair. Fellow Commissioners, thank you for seeing me. So, I wanted to give an update on the AIS Task Force bylaws. So, they were first established in 2014 when the grant funding came in and before the coordinator position was approved. So, over this winter, we've just re-upped and updated the, the bylaws. I'll describe the updates here. We reviewed, we're reviewing the membership every year at the January meeting and before it was every odd year, so it's changed to every year. The membership term is for three years with the ability to serve three consecutive terms and before there wasn't a term stated on there. The Cook County Commissioner representative on the task force will be the chair and the chair gets to approve new members or removal of members. And then the soil and water representative will be the vice chair of the task force. Invoices are going to the land commissioner instead of soil and water due to the change in that. And the majority of members constitutes a quorum in attendance to make a motion and electronic attendance also serves as attendance. So, those are the changes to the bylaws. Just wondering if there would be a, a motion to approve these for the county?
Thank you. Commissioner Bershon, do you have questions?
No, no, I support this.
Okay. Commissioner DuKer?
What exactly is electronic means?
By phone. So, they can call in, yeah, they could video call in also. So, if they're not able to be present at the meeting, they can call in.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just had a meeting, uh, yesterday and we're moving along well and it's good to see that these, uh, bylaws are looked at and, uh, updated, so.
No other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt these, uh, bylaws for the aquatic invasive task force.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any people opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd, with the 2017 Cook County, or County Board of Appeal and Equalization Training.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Trying to make it brief today, basically the reason why I asked for this request was that, um, we're coming up on the County Board of Equalization in June. I believe we have Ginny is currently the certified member and I think you're in your last term, if I remember, or last year of the term. Brady is as well. We had a situation in Lutson last week where the only certified member, um, wasn't able to attend the board, the local board of review. So, therefore, under the rules, the assessor's office basically takes over the meeting and it becomes an open book meeting. Not a big deal to the public, didn't make a lot of changes, nothing, but it, it complicates things for next year. It was an oversight by, by that particular person on the, their board who had a scheduling conflict and he was actually on his way to Japan. So, he was unable to, we had a quorum, so they, they opened the meeting, but I had to run it, so. We have to jump through some hoops to get them back their rights to hold it next year. I'm thinking of this in anticipation of next year is that we need to have at least two members of any board that are certified. And, uh, that's why when I, when I sent this, I talked to Jeff about it and I had, added the link because all this training now is online. You can do it online, it's an hour or two training, it's, it would preclude any possibilities of problems in the future, so. Going forward, we're fine for this year, but going forward for next year, I, I would make a suggestion that we have at least a couple of members that are, that are going to be certified for this.
Commissioner Bershon, did you have any questions for Todd?
How many hours does the training take?
It's, uh, I believe it's only an hour. It's pretty, pretty simple training.
Thank you.
Commissioner DuKer? Why don't we just, as part of our job, have all of us do it since it's online and.
It's online now, they're making it easier, although there is a timeline for this whole thing, they, you can't, you can't do it after February 1st, which is always. which is always coming up too. They, they cut it off, and they don't start it until July. So there's kind of a timing in the whole thing. So if we can, if we can anticipate this going forward sometime this summer, if everybody wanted to try and get online and take that to get certified, then we'd be in good shape.
And we do it once people are elected, then we're automatically going to get staggered.
And it's a four-year certification.
Sometimes we have commissioners step down, so it'd be good.
Right.
Makes sense.
Then Ginny's not all alone.
Yeah.
I would probably agree with you.
Well, we tried everything we could, basically, to make that meeting in Lutson work. I even asked our representative from the Department of Revenue if we could have Ginny sit in on it, because she's a former Lutson board member, and she's a certified member, but no, you have to be a seated member of that board to do it, so we weren't able to. We'll have to make some corrections for next year for the board, but we can, we can solve that.
This would start after July 1st?
Yep.
So July 1st to February 1st. That's the window of which, and more than one, but I liked Commissioner DeKerk's suggestion that we all do it.
And then we print out our own certificate, or how does that work?
I believe so. They issue your certificate, and you have it. And they, they inform us, and we have to have some of those on file for each township, each, each of these members, just so that we're in compliance with the process, so.
Great, any other questions? Thank you, Todd.
You bet.
Okay, Jeff?
Madam Chair, could I just ask a question procedurally? It was suggested that we all do it. To what extent do we act on that, or don't we? It's just a voluntary thing?
I'm, I'm thinking it's a voluntary thing. I mean, we need at least two, so it'd be.
I'm going to do it.
Yeah, and I think I'll try to do it. So I, you know, I wouldn't, I don't, I won't look it on your report card, but I don't know that, if you don't do it.
You don't get a pay increase if you do it?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Burscham, if, if I could, what I'll probably do is just forward this information to Julie and let her follow up with each of you. And then after you complete, you can get her a copy of the certificate, and she'll make sure that Todd has noticed of that.
Thank you.
And most of the time, it applies to the townships, which are in my district. So, you know, the other two evidently had a quorum, so they could do it, but Lutson did not this time. But hopefully that won't happen again, but I'll be on standby.
Okay, but speaking of that, and I just thought of this. If, if you weren't able to fill in, how does all of us having a certificate help that situation?
Well, Todd said it wouldn't help that, because you had to be a currently seated township member, so Ginny wouldn't have been able to fill in.
So it really doesn't help Todd's dilemma, us all getting.
But it helps us if we change, or someone else is elected, and one of us can't make it to the meeting.
It's a requirement of the county. It does not satisfy the county that the townships have to meet as well.
Got it, got it, got it. I'm clear now, thank you. Okay. So we already handled B, so we can cover A.
She's got quite a sense of timing, doesn't she?
Oh, yes. Stepped out, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We have been working on, on this since Jim left. We have been working on this since I started here, the issue related to a public information officer for the county and what to do with emergency management at Cook County. And one of the things that we recognized when we brought Valerie into the position is that we had an opportunity to increase, increase the level of service we were able to provide because of the person that, that we had here for this. So organizationally, we had a couple of things that we had to do. One of them is, we've been working, basically, since the month after Valerie got here on updating the job description to reflect what an integrated communications office and emergency management office would look like. And that has taken a little longer than we wanted to, primarily because we've been in the middle of a comp study. And we've been busy with the larger organization and only just recently had the opportunity to start looking at individual jobs again. So given that background, what I would say is that the recommendation is to create an Office of Emergency Management and Public Information, that Valerie would be the staff person in that office, and then that department head would report directly to me for the position and still be very closely associated with the Sheriff's Department for the emergency management and, and emergency response portions of that. We reviewed this job description at the Personnel Committee over the last two meetings, and it was moved by that group to bring it forward to, to the board for, for approval. The classification of the job was done by Judy and Julie and myself internally. And the classification D-61 is consistent with several other positions that we have. Diane Booth is a D-61, Brian Silence is a D-61, according to our current classification system. Reviewing that, that made sense with what we were asking this position to take on and the responsibility that they're going to, they're going to coordinate. I will tell you that we are in between a couple of our policies. One of our policies, looking at the employment handbook, is, is we have several reasons for a change in employment status. One of them is a promotion, whereby if there is an open position, somebody from within the organization would be able to apply for that position. And it would be treated as a, as a new position. They would restart their probationary period. And that doesn't really fit this job, this situation. The second situation we have is that if a job description's rating caused it to be reclassified to a higher pay grade level, the employee shall immediately be placed at the new higher grade level at the step just above the current base rate. Which, this isn't that either. This, the proposal for this job is to move from a C-42 to a D-61, which is actually four steps. And we talked about this as well as, at the last Personnel Committee meeting, that our handbook does not address this situation. And we've come up with several situations since I've been here where our current process really inhibits our ability to retain qualified people. It really inhibits our ability to recognize that the great amount of skills that somebody's bringing, an incumbent is bringing, to a position that we have and an opportunity for the organization to grow without having to increase the number of people that we have to, to provide those services. So my recommendation is, is that, so, so by the reclassification, the policy would say that we would bring Valerie up to a D-61-2 at step one. But if I look at the minimum qualifications for the job, and if I were evaluating Valerie as the, as the, as the choice for this position, and I were looking at the level of skill and the additional experience she brings above the minimum requirements for this job, I would recommend that we bring her in at step three of a D-61-2. And so that is my recommendation, is that we approve the new position description, and we fill that position with, with Valerie Marasco at D-61-2, step three.
Oh, got it. Thank you. I was confused by the D-61-2.
Yeah, I'm sorry. D-61-2 is the classification.
Got it, got it, and, and step three.
And, and step three. And I wanted to be very clear that we don't have a policy right now that outlines that. What I think we need to do is make sure that our handbook reflects an option for changing employment status that covers this situation so that going forward, we have clear documentation on how we handle it.
Thank you. So what we're going to, we're just going to work on that in one motion?
Yeah, and the motion is two parts. One, to approve the job description as submitted, and two, to place Valerie in that position.
So questions, comments? Commissioner Burscham?
Well, okay. So from what I understand, this position would report to the county administrator and previously reported to the county sheriff. So, okay. And, and this is something that I would like to see in the future. It's just one of my, my things from my background is, at some point in time, or maybe do we, do we have some kind of flow chart of hierarchy of how everything flows? Looking at the hierarchy of the organization. And I, you know, I'm just a, I was in the big system, and it was pretty big, but it's important, and this to me is, is an important issue that lends itself to looking at how it falls into the big picture. Okay, where is it?
Should we get a copy?
We do have a current org chart, and I'll make sure that you have a copy of the current org chart.
Maybe should have found one, but I, I, thank you.
Thank you.
So this would be a correction in that?
This would be, this would be an intentional change in the organizational structure.
Thank you.
No, it looks good. I think it's worth.
Commissioner DeKerk? It might not be in our employee handbook, but this has been discussed since I was elected.
The first time?
The first time, yes. So it's really nice to be a part of this process, finally moving forward, and having the right people in place, having administrative form of government. It's just, this is so exciting. It's just great. And Valerie, you've already taken this on without having your title and crown and numbers and dots and everything. You have covered us. You sent out an email this morning explaining that we weren't live streaming when we were live streaming. And so that alone is huge, because I can't tell you how many times, as a commissioner, I've been left out, or had no idea, or didn't know where to go. And so I apologize, there's four of us, soon to be five of us, that you're going to have to answer questions, but you seem to be ahead of us at this point. So this is a huge step for the county. Glad we're a part of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, a good step, that's for sure. Is there a minimum or maximum amount of hours that are required to fill this position?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Sterling. This would be an exempt level position, so it would, the expectation would be more than 40, and as many as it takes.
Depends. One week would be different than the other.
And one week could very well be different from the other. FLSA exempt, we've got several expectations in our handbook that define what we expect from our exempt employees as far as hours. And I will tell you that Valerie has already gone above and beyond what's required of that and has every intention of meeting those commitments.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, I agree with everything that's been said, and it's evolutionarily speaking for our mode of government. It just feels like a really positive step. As I've been commissioning now for a little over two years, I've, on many occasions, wished that there could have been more communication out in front of the issues, and now we have a system in place with a fabulous person at the helm that will help us do that, because so many of our problems and issues have been exacerbated by a lack of communication. And so we're, this seems like a really great move. With that being said, yes, Commissioner DeKerk?
Pat, thank you. Valerie has been acting outside of her position, and you've been very supportive of that, so thank you for allowing her to do what she's exceptional at. And I make a motion to approve the job description and the change to D-61-2, step three.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so we're on to Commissioner Concerns, Commissioner Reports. Are there any Commissioner, Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I just want to consider a heads up in regards to the radio interviews that we're going to be doing, a little bit longer now. Jay has asked that we are on for 20 minutes.
Really?
And so Myron and I have some Wednesday difficulties. So when we get the new commissioner on board, I think we need to redo the whole schedule and maybe work out something for Myron and I not to be on that particular Wednesday. I mean, I don't mind, I, I try to schedule, because I'm always going to do it, and you're going to Virginia. I try to schedule my phone in if I have to, in an area where I have cell service. I pull over, and we do the interview, for five to eight minutes. Now being up to 20 minutes, it probably could be at our discretion whether we have 20 minutes worth. But I think he'd like to extend it, so that if we do, we can do that. But I think we'll just need to look at our schedule again.
Commissioner DeKerk? He just asked that we come in a little early, only because we have run up against pop quiz, which I hate talking over pop quiz. Not that they're not listening to us, but pop quiz is important. So he's not saying that he's going to take 20 minutes. He just wants to allow to have room in there. And then I will be traveling tomorrow, so I know we've switched. Myron went to you, you went to me, and I'm supposed to be tomorrow. And so actually, Myron is going to cover tomorrow, because I will be traveling. Otherwise, I had planned to leave an hour earlier, so that I would be in cellphone range by the time the opportunity came.
Right, and I think that issue too.
Can I always do it the last Wednesday of the month?
Yeah, 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 and maybe we should work around what people can do.
And Madam Chair, Commissioners, what Jay had asked is that the commissioner time changed to 9:10, so that he didn't have to.
His new lights are looking fabulous.
So, so, so the commissioner call-in time is, is 9:10, or the commissioner review time is, is 9:10. And, and of course, what I will do is ask Julie to coordinate the schedule when we get our fifth member, and we come up with a revised schedule.
I actually can, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other Commissioner Reports, Concerns, meetings to note? So we just covered that WTIP interview is going to be Commissioner Burscham tomorrow. Did you have some?
At 9:10.
At 9:10? At 9:10, a little bit earlier.
Thank you.
And so we're about ready to adjourn, but I should probably just mention that there will be a video conference for elected officials in the ITV Room in the Cook County Courthouse from noon to 1:30 today. Orientation to the Minnesota Local Public Health System. This is not a formal meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners. However, a quorum of the Cook County Commissioners may, may possibly be in attendance. The second notice is the Public Information Office launch event of the Cook County's new brand is at 2:00 PM today in the Commissioner's room. And again, this is not a formal meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners. However, a quorum of the Cook County Commissioners may possibly be in attendance.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, the first meeting, orientation to the Minnesota Local Public Health System is a training being put on by the state for commissioners to understand some of the workings of the local public health system and the responsibilities of our Health and Human Services Department. And then the second one, there will be cake, so I hope everybody's here.
The second one, there will be cake.
I think we need to understand that, that the decision that was just made is a big deal and really increases our capacity without really increasing the cost of providing the service. And I'm, those of us who have been working on the Communications Committee for the last five or six months know that this is a big deal, so, thank you.
Thank you. Therefore, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Thank you.